Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the May 14th Board of Selectmen virtual meeting. I believe it's the first one o'clock meeting we've ever had. So, welcome, and we'll start the meeting off as usual with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, item number two, the approval of the minutes of the April 23rd Board of Selectmen meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Fred, before we make a motion to approve, I am, I'm sorry, I just read them this morning. I wanted to make a clarification on page, under page two, item six C, which is the town attorney's retainer agreement, where my comments, I just wanted to, and I didn't have a chance to go back to the recording, but my point was that the retainer would reflect that there would not be any pecuniary benefits to Mr. Marino or his new firm on referrals made arising out of his representation of Greenwich. And I believe that's what was understood, not that he wouldn't get any benefits limited to Cohen and Wolf referrals. So, that right, that's where we were on the same page, right Ben, on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was my understanding.
Yeah. That was my understanding.
Financial benefits, no financial benefits for any referrals regardless of who they're made to.
Right, so I just like the language in the minute to reflect that, that it's and it's not limited to referrals to Cohen and Wolf. And with those modifications, if Fred and Lauren are fine with that, then I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second, Lauren Raven, second.
Okay, and let's call for a fall in favor, Fred Camillo votes yay.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Okay, so three to nothing, thank you. Minutes approved. We'll go on to the updates, first selectmen's updates. We've had partial reopenings of our parks and beaches, it's going well. We are also discussing how we deal with the sand part of the beach, not just the trails and walking paths. So, we're in discussions there, how to do that so that our citizens can enjoy the beaches this summer, but do so, to do so in a safe way. So, just so everybody knows, we, we're in, haven't forgotten about that, we are devising a plan and we'll share details of it in the coming days and hopefully within the next week or so, we'll have something out there. We are awaiting May 20th, the governor's partial reopening of businesses. We are in almost daily contact with somebody in the governor's administration, whether it's the governor or it's the LG, whether it's an attorney there. In fact, I just reached out to one of the attorneys this morning with some ideas about phase two, maybe pushing some of that up. We have certain businesses here in town. For example, like non-traditional gyms that do one-on-one training and they're asking if they, which is to be in the second phase in June 20th, if that could be pushed up and maybe phase one modified, so they're open to listening to any requests and any ideas that the towns have, so working on that, also working on Memorial Day. We're getting requests from specifically so far from Old Greenwich and Byram about ceremonies and also the one over at Byram School. Where, you know, we know that the executive order limiting crowd sizes to no more than five is still in effect. So, I've been speaking with them about doing some type of virtual ceremony for everybody to see on Memorial Day. But, one of the questions to the governor's council this morning will be, this afternoon will be, you know, if they relax anything like that and allow for a few more people if they're spaced out, I don't know what they'll say. I know they've allowed some modifications of that. For example, with our houses of worship, which I believe are capped at 49. But, you know, I don't think many people would go anyway because of the, you know, they're still mindful of the of the distance, social and physical distancing, but we'll find out, we'll get some more feedback and clarification from the governor. And we'll pass that along. We are discussing internally and will be establishing a task force to look at not only the short-term reopenings of our town, but in our business districts, but also our long-term plan, what is, what is our long-term goals, what do we want our town to look like on the other side of this, is there something that we can do now that may carry over? And I think we all have some pretty good ideas about that and some of them have been discussed for decades and I think now's the time to really look hard, hard at these, these concepts that have been up to now just discussed, so I know Lauren and Jill will be on that task force and we'll have certainly all the stakeholders there, fire, police, emergency operations, health, planning, zoning, and one member from the RTM, one member from the BET, and maybe even a few citizens at large. So, some exciting stuff, but it's, there's a lot of moving parts on this. And it's each day when you get excited talking about this, you come to another thing and it immediately complicates everything, so it's a task, but we'll get it done and certainly I know we're going to have some great ideas from all members of the task force that we're going to share with the public. People asking about certain, you know, hours and extensions of parks, we are you know, going to be extending the hours, Cosco Park, I think now is one from 2:30 to 3:30, we'll get that you know, further out until it's, you know, the sun goes down eventually. Just doing it slowly and so far it's working. The Marina's same thing. We'll extend those hours, I think now they're five o'clock, but we're telling people that it's in discussion, so we'll, that will get moved up to, or moved out. And Jill was nice enough to bring an issue of in her neighborhood about a coyote, so the Parks Department did immediately go and look and search Byron Park. Haven't found anything yet, but they're keeping an eye out for, doesn't mean that even if it jumped over the fence and came from Byron Park, it could have come from, originally from some other place, so thank you for the heads up, so it's, you know, hopefully we can find them, or them, and relocate them to another place, so thank you for that, just wanted to give you that update. So, that's it for, from the first selectmen's updates, we'll, we'll go right to left, it will go my right. Jill, Sluck Woman Oberlander.
Thank you Fred, and thank you for that coyote update. So, just in my update, I've been continued to working on the sustainability issues with our sustainability committee and we're moving on to see how, now that tipping fees have passed through the RTM, we're going to look to see how we can make it a little easier for town residents to reduce their municipal solid waste, trying to work out the details of how we can do a better job at Town Hall, also on, on some waste reduction initiatives and looking, starting to look at transportation-related issues, working through subcommittees. So, if you do have, anyone out there has an interest on any of these issues, please reach out to me and we'll connect you to the appropriate sub-group and sector group and we can all work together to take advantage of the fact that we all really appreciate our green space and our natural resources these days. I'm continuing to participate on the United Way Grants Committee as they deal with COVID relief and as an information gathering point for the local nonprofits that are doing a lot of work on helping out our residents throughout this process. One of the ideas that I have this week been pushing and I call out actually to any resident who has experience or would like to work on this, I'm, I've asked the first selectman about a volunteer corps of sorts and maybe a youth, expanding at Sluck Person Raven's suggestion, Youth Conservation Corps. We have a lot of youth who will not be able to do what they had anticipated doing this summer due to some of the COVID restrictions and it would be great if we could figure out a way to give them a satisfying internship or if nonprofits have needs that we could match people, whether they be college students home for the summer, some of our high school students or otherwise. So, I'm going to start looking into that in greater detail and I would love some support from anyone in the community who has experience with that as well or wants to add any, any ideas. Please email me or reach out to me by phone, that would be terrific, I'd appreciate that, so. And that's, and other constituent issues, including the coyote, various, various concerns, so please reach out and we'll try to get you the response and coverage you need, thanks.
Thank you Jill, and we'll switch over to the left and Sluck Woman Raven.
Thanks Jill. So, since April 3rd, between Fred, Jill and I, we've actually interviewed 27 candidates for nine different boards and commissions. And we have a good news story, we actually have more candidates than we have physicians. So, we're still sorting through that, cycling through that, so even though we haven't been appointing as many folks to a various board of commission, we have been very busy doing our interviews, we actually have, I think, four scheduled tomorrow, and it's just really nice to see the outpouring of volunteerism and people who want to be involved in local government in our town. And speaking of volunteerism, working with the Commission on Aging, two weeks ago, we kicked off an effort to call seniors in town, we were focused on folks that were 80 years or older. We had about 65 members of the RTM participate and make phone calls. And across the board, everyone said what a rewarding experience that was for the volunteers and how much the seniors appreciated getting the phone call. We're calling the project Hello Neighbor, and we're just calling to say hello and check in. This Friday, another robo-call will go out to about 2,000 seniors. Now, we've lowered the age group to 75 and above, just letting them know that the volunteers will be starting to make the calls again this weekend. We've upped the volunteer number to 70 from the RTM and we have about 30 volunteers from the senior provider network in town, so we'll be making those 2,000-plus calls starting Saturday. And then the last update, this is an oldie and hopefully a goodie. Months ago, we were talking about putting together KPIs or key performance indicators for the planning of conservation and development. Want to start to think about how we re-kick off that effort because we did meet as a sub-team but just did not necessarily progress in a way that we had anticipated, so talking to planning and zoning. And we'll rethink how we can do that work moving forward and make it more led from the Board of Selectmen and more municipal indicators as opposed to just indicators for the POCD. And that's my update.
Okay, thanks Lauren. Okay, moving along to old business and there is none. So, we'll skip over to new business and there is one item, the 2020 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act Program Proposals, the Community Development Block and Grants Administrator Tyler Fairburn is here with us. Good afternoon Tyler.
Hi, everybody, thank you for having me for the Neighborhood Assistance Act Program. This is a state program that's run through the Department of Revenue Services that the town kind of acts as a pass-through entity for, so we don't have any money involved directly, but what we do is kind of serve as an initial really an initial screener of these applications before they're forwarded off to the state, so this program, again through the Department of Revenue Services, offers 60% and 100% tax credits up to $150,000 per business for businesses who are interested in partnering with and matching with local nonprofits who are doing projects that serve primarily low-income people, so what we do, just as far as process quickly, is I send this out to all of our CDBG partners on our distribution list in, I think it's March or April, and then we give them 30 days to get these back and then bring them before the Board of Selectmen as our public hearing. And then if it is approved here, it moves on to the RTM. We're approving it at the June meeting and we then send it along to the state by July 1st. They actually extended it a little bit this year because of the COVID outbreak, but we, if we approve everything, send it to the state in July and then they usually let us know by December, which project, which proposals have been matched with corporate sponsors and then we then send that along to the agencies and that's really the end of our involvement after that, so. This year, we had two applicants, we had kids in crisis and the YMCA, which is, the YMCA is usually done pretty well with this program. You know, typically, the projects that get funded, the ones that are most successful are the ones where the organization who's applying already has a corporate sponsor lined up going into the process. My experience has been that it's pretty rare that's, that an organization will submit an application and then just, you know, kind of get picked out of a hat by, by a corporate sponsor who they don't have a relationship with, so. The Y has applied for the full $150,000 and Kids in Crisis has applied for $21,087, which is the specific fixed cost of the program they have in mind to do LED bulb replacements at their facility on Salem Street, so. I, you know, I don't know if you have any, any questions or if there are any comment, doesn't look like there's anyone from the public queued up, maybe Jenny would know that, but certainly turn it over to the, to the board first. Yes.
Yeah. Thanks Tyler, I know you've had a very busy morning, so. But this is my first time, I'm not familiar with this program, so maybe I just a couple, maybe you could give us a little bit more on how it works, so a, a a not-for-profit submits an application, right, and their application can be anywhere up to $150,000 for a project.
Yep.
And so companies bid, are we capped or is our community capped on the number of applications?
We are not, so the state has about $5 million total available for this program, it's open to all 169 municipalities. We can submit as many as we'd like. What happens is after we do our intake, there's a period, it's a very brief window. It's like two weeks in September, October, where businesses apply for this. So, again, I think what, what has been typically the case with the Y is that there's a you know, a board member who works for one of the bigger banks and they have a charitable giving arm, a local giving arm, who will contribute to the program, it's, it's but then there's also the option, so say your kid's in crisis and you're looking to do an energy upgrade. Some of the bigger utility companies will, will take advantage of this, so they will, you know, essentially at random pick some programs that are kind of energy and efficiency related and they will fund them in part. Last year, so I think last year, the Y got the full 150, but boys and girls put in an application to replace their air conditioning unit and something with the indoor pool. And Santa Energy ended up giving them like $2,900 towards that, so. That is, that is the gist of it, it's, it's you know, the companies that do it are usually, they have some kind of program or some division that handles things like this.
So, a company could bid or respond to all or part of the individual applicant's request? And then do they fund that portion directly to the not-for-profit and get a tax credit in return, is that how it?
Correct, so this is, so this is even further removed than CDBG, which is where we have, you know, our line of credit and then we draw on it to reimburse the applicants. In this instance, there's no money moving through the town in any way, it's just, we're just the initial kind of conduit by which this makes its way to the state.
Right, so but it's essentially that the business is doing the investment and they're getting a tax credit in return, is it a one-for-one? So, let's say a business decides to fund $50,000, otherwise 150 requests, they get a $50,000 tax credit, is that?
Exactly, so there's the, the, there's 100% tax credit for energy, you know, capital projects and then you can also apply for like service programs. That is the 60% credit, so if you, if you put 100 grand into Kids in Crisis to help with their safe haven program, you'd get a $60,000 credit.
So, it's not limited to capital, it could be programmatic?
Correct.
So, so just to, actually, I know that the, the CDBG grants are not before us, but I was listening to a little bit of the BET before this. Are the same nonprofits who provide services to Greenwich eligible to submit an application for the Neighborhood Assistance Act Program?
Absolutely.
Let's say Inspirica, who had a capital request. Could they submit through Greenwich a request for tax credit funding for the same capital project?
They, they would have to submit through Stanford, I think, because they're, so it's a little different there, I think on this it's limited, there's like the geographic limitation, so because Inspirica is headquartered in Stanford, they would have, if they were to put in for the Neighborhood Assistance Act, it would have to be through the city of Stanford. Whereas CDBG, we have the unique arrangement where because they are providing services that we are not, they can apply in part for our CDBG funds, but you can absolutely apply for both, which is why we send it out to our, our CDBG distribution list. And that's usually who applies, and I put it up on our website as well, in the event that other non-CDBG nonprofits want to get involved, but I, in my three years, I've not seen one that has not also been a CDBG applicant.
Okay, so Inspirica wouldn't be able to apply through us for some portion of that funding, but Ableist, who I understand is getting, is proposed for additional funds on a capital project, they could apply?
Ableist could have applied for this, I believe they did last year, I don't think they were funded though.
Right, but they didn't submit an application this?
They did not, no, we only got Kids in Crisis and the Y, YM.
So, I guess my question is, especially if there's additional timing for this project to go forward in this year, does it make sense to reopen the application process so that any of the CDBG not-for-profits who didn't get funded could submit for this project, so for example, this, the Ableist funding, or if there are capital projects that didn't get funded under the regular CDBG grant process, they could then submit under this for some additional funds, why is it, if we have extra time right now, why are we? Shouldn't we open it up to give them another bite of the apple as a part?
I think the challenge on that would be the timing, so we have to have this to the state by July 1st, so that only leaves us the June RTM meeting to get it approved. So, I, I mean, if we were to reopen it, and I had to submit this to the RTM, but I think it was today, was the cutoff to get on the ball.
Tomorrow, I think was my recollection from.
Tomorrow, okay, yeah, so I, I think it was, I think it was in part timing and then in part just the fact that there's no guarantee with this, you know, I think it's kind of a, a, you know, if you don't have a a partner lined up, a business partner on the corporate side, you're just kind of going in blind, I mean, it doesn't take a lot of work to put the application together, I don't understand why more people don't apply for it, just in the, in the event that you get lucky, but you know, I think they've looked at it as, well, we have direct control at the town level of our CDBG versus this is just a you know, a hail mary if you put something in and you don't have a corporate partner.
Right, but I thought you had just said before that the state might have pushed back the timetable a little bit.
So, they pushed it to July 31st, which I think would still leave us.
Well, it would give us the July, oh, the July, they don't mean, their team doesn't mean July.
I think they don't mean July, which is the problem, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm wondering then, let me take it to the next step, is if you have submitted already for the RTM, if we were to open up the process again, we have a, another Board of Selectmen meeting in two weeks, whether you could submit an amended recommendation if we did get more interest?
Yeah, I can certainly ask that, I'll email the clerk and ask them if we can do that since, right, we should be, we have the item on the call as a placeholder and if we get
Right.
additional, right, and right, it shouldn't be an issue because there's no, I mean, it doesn't go through the BET anyway, there's no cost of town, it's just allowing other, I'm totally open to that, I mean, I'll do the, the outreach to the agencies and just make sure that.
Especially now that the CDBG recommendations are in, maybe there is an opportunity to have them apply for things that hadn't been funded before.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean.
Can I jump in here real quick? When we say they, who are we talking about, they apply?
The not-for-profits.
Okay, not anybody in particular?
No, any not-for-profit that didn't.
That didn't, okay.
That didn't get what they asked for under the CDBG grant recommendations. Right, I listened to the conversation this morning, I guess it sounds like Inspirica, who's, who's the recommendation, your recommendation was to reduce for their boilers, they can apply through at least our process, but Ableist could have, and they have a number of projects, Ableist or other organizations that didn't get the award that they wanted, could apply.
Yeah, I'm sorry that I was up in meetings all this morning, otherwise I would have loved to have joined into that conversation that I guess two members of the BET didn't like the fact that we took some money and put it back into a Greenwich-based organization, took it from a Stanford-based one, which we all did give a significant amount of money to. So, I will, I'll be there on Monday though to defend that choice. And thank you Tyler for all you've done with that, a lot of vetting. A lot of vetting with that, so all good choices, it's, I don't think there's any really wrong choice when you're, you're looking at all these nonprofits, it's just what you, what your priorities are and something that doesn't mean, and one's any less than the other, but I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, I think that the, the conversation that I heard Fred was not necessarily about the choice one over the other, it was the impact on the project in the sense that if, and I guess the committee, and this is a question for Tyler, he can explain it better, I think he was on the, on, on the seat there, as it were, that if you only found part of a capital project, where does that leave the not-for-profit and one of the reasons, my understanding from the discussion is that the commit, the, the CDBG committee in making their decisions looked at complete projects, is really, it's just a clarification if you weren't listening in. But that's a different issue, I, I would.
Sorry, I didn't quite catch that, could you please?
Sorry.
That's all right, I guess I'm unclear for Siri, but if, if we could, if, if it's permitted, if, if we could give those not-for-profits another chance to submit an application, it doesn't work, it doesn't hurt us in any way and would give them an opportunity for some additional funding.
I think it's a good idea and I'm happy to email the clerk if they're okay with that. If the RTM's fine, I know that I, I'm more than happy to put it back out there and then set the deadline by, when is the next Board of Selectmen meeting?
Two weeks from today.
Two weeks from today, okay, so I will, I'll set, I would just put the deadline, you know, two days before, give people another 12 days to put this in, again, it's, it is not much involved in this application, it's not as all-encompassing as the CDBG one is, so I think if people want to take a shot at it, you know, why not?
Thank you Tyler, just copy the moderator and the moderator pro tem on that, just to make sure that we're not overstepping there.
Okay, are there any other questions? Lauren? Okay, so Tyler, I know this constitutes the public hearing for this and it's going to go on to the to the RTM in June, so we, we have, we vote to approve this and then it goes on to the, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so is there a motion out there to approve this?
Should, Fred, sorry, should we, not we, the board wait, wait until that next meeting in two weeks when we may have more applications in?
Do we have to approve it to get it on the agenda?
So, it's, it's already on the RTM agenda.
Okay.
But, but it's, it's on the RTM call for June 8th, it's just on as only Kids in Crisis and the YMCA.
I, I don't think there's a reason to, to wait on these two projects unless you think they might amend these two projects. Because that way they'll have the approved, you know, it's just opening it up for additional support.
Okay.
And that's.
So, I make the motion that we approve. So I make the motion that we approve the proposed Twenty Twenty Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act Program Proposals.
I will second that. Jill Oberlander seconds.
Okay, um, discussion, okay. All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yea.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Okay, three to nothing. Okay, uh, thank you. And Tyler, uh, thanks again. We'll circle back. I had some other questions, we could do it offline.
Absolutely.
But uh, thanks again, and again, sorry, I had meetings all this morning, otherwise I would have joined in this morning.
Oh, not a problem. That was, that was, that was a unique experience for me. I've never had them uh debated at the committee level like that, so.
Welcome to two thousand twenty, right? All right, that, thanks, my friend.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will move on to appointments and nominations. We have one, correct, Lauren?
Yeah, so we have one appointment. Um, I motioned that we approve the appointment of Patty Roberts to the Board of Human Services effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty, for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, is there a second?
Jill's on mute.
Jill, you're on mute.
Sorry, Jill Oberlander, I second that appointment.
Okay, is there any discussion on Patty Roberts?
I would just like to say that I've had the opportunity to uh witness Patty's diligence. Um, when I was on the B E T, she uh took interest in the Nathaniel Witherall project, came to many, many of our B E T meetings dealing with Nathaniel Witherall. And um, really found her to be very committed. And uh, I think uh, from, she has a uh, a background in in some of these nonprofits and human service nonprofits and has been on the board and has shown a personal interest. So um, I'm I'm really happy that she has put herself forward and uh, happy to support her nomination. I really want to thank her for her continued dedication to volunteerism.
Thank you. Well said. I would echo that. Patty jumps right in to it, knowing that she has the skill sets for this and many other boards, but uh, she's very fair, open-minded. And uh, it will be a real asset to this board as she is to the town and and to the RTM. So uh, we're we're thrilled that she stepped forward for this. So uh, I would agree with you. And uh, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yea.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Okay, three to nothing. So Patty Roberts is our newest member of the Department, the Board of Human Services. So thank you. And with that, we just have one more item, which is executive session. So I guess we're going to turn off here.
Yes.
And just leave a few of us on here.
Yes, I'm gonna turn off everyone's video and mute you. And when you come back, um, I'll turn that back on.
Okay.
And you may want to text, um, if I can get a, yeah, maybe get it, I will, you have my text. You can text me afterwards if if I don't have things turned on.
Okay.
All right, I paused the recording, so we just need our telephone number. I don't know, Barbara sent that out.
I'm sorry, so what do we need to do?
We need to mute and hide our video and call our typical number.
Right.
Which is the one thousand, I think, with the five-digit um.
The one we use for, oh, so we're doing it, we're not doing it on?
Zoom, correct.
Oh, I didn't realize that, okay.
There's no, yeah, there's no way to stop the it completely from recording in Zoom. Um, the most secure way is for you to just use a conference line at this point.
Right, because we still have all the attendees on and things like that.
Lauren, you're muted. Sorry, I mean, Jill, you're muted.
I'm sorry, yeah, the same one we use for the E M O C calls, right?
Yes, I believe so. If not, there's another one I could text to you, but I just want to make sure that Valerie and then have that number.
Right. So someone needs to email it, we can't.
I think Barbara, didn't Barbara email it out? Because I have one I could, I thought Barbara emailed it to everyone.
I'm emailing it now. It's Barbara, I'm emailing it now. I sent the wrong number, so forgive.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sending text to Valerie.
And Craig is gonna put up a an executive session banner so that people who happen upon this will see what's happening. We're also still live on G C T V, I think.
I paused the recording.
And I'm gonna turn off the, yeah, I'll turn off the video. Okay, Jenny and Craig, we're back.
Yep.
Yeah, we're just waiting for.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what?
We are coming back from executive session. We're just waiting on Fred.
Oh, okay, that's great.
I'm there, hey, Jenny.
Okay.
All right, I'm recording again.
Okay, is everybody on?
On here.
Jill?
Yes.
Okay, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Um, I motioned to adjourn our meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Sorry, I second that.
Okay, all is in favor. Fred Camillo votes yea.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Okay, thank you all, three to nothing. See you all in two weeks, some of you before then. Take care.